Good evening. The May 8, 2018, regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Buckley?
Present.
Ms. Jisling?
Present.
Mrs. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Tuttle?
Here.
Mrs. Briner?
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like to welcome everyone to the May 8, 2018, regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on spectrum cable, Channel 1026 in Mentor and Channel 1025 in Mentor-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Please join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of Victor Sen, a teacher at Mentor High School. Thank you. And for those who are aware, we have an update from our interim superintendent, Mr. Porter, about the Discovery Tours issue. Mr. Porter?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to share our latest update regarding the eighth-grade trip planning and the news we just shared with students and parents this afternoon. First, I would like to thank the extremely generous outpouring of support from our Cleveland community and beyond. That includes businesses and organizations, all of which we will be acknowledging publicly in the near future. So here is the plan we are offering for an overnight trip experience for all of our mentor schools' eighth graders in lieu of the Washington DC trip that was canceled. The new trip would be a one-night overnight happening May 17 through the 18th, at the end of next week, no extra cost to parents. Representatives, first off, from Cedar Point reached out to help us through Fox 8 News to offer free tickets for all of our eighth-grade students and chaperones that spent a day at the amusement park. Cedar Point is also providing its beautiful hotel breakers on the water for our large group at extremely discounted pricing for the overnight. We have also contracted with them to have Cedar Point police officers there for security overnight. Following morning after breakfast, our students will board the buses and head back toward Cleveland to attend one of three Cleveland-area activities: the Cleveland Metropolitan Zoo or the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame or a trip on the Nautica Queen on the Cuyahoga River. Our principals will work with students in the next several days to decide which of the specific destinations they will visit. Students will stay grouped together with their roommates for the Cleveland-area activities. The final stop of the trip for all groups will be at First Energy Stadium, home of the Cleveland Browns, where all of the eighth-grade students will be invited onto the field to take a group photo as the entire eighth-grade class. From there, the buses will return to Mentor mid to late afternoon for parent pickup. We are still working on minor details for the trip, but we have all of those large components booked and feel very confident sharing the trip information publicly as soon as we were able. Even though we are certainly disappointed with the Washington DC trip cancellation, we are excited to be able to provide this alternative trip to our eighth graders, even those who were not planning to attend the original Washington DC trip. We will hold a parent meeting, an organizational meeting, on Monday, May 14, this coming Monday at 5:00 PM in the Fine Arts Center to lay out the detailed plans and expectations for this two-day trip. That meeting will last about an hour. If parents are unable to attend that meeting on short notice, we will be sending out to all parents a Google Slides presentation with all of the information out to everyone ahead of time. As I had mentioned, a lot of individuals and businesses and organizations have stepped forward or worked tirelessly to both reach out and help, and again, we will be publicly thanking those. At this time, I do want to take just a second to compliment Mr. Wilson, our administrative team, and our three middle school principals for working around the clock administratively to help address this complex challenge this past week. There was no perfect solution when the trip was taken away this past week and canceled at the last hour, but our eighth graders deserve a memorable end of the year, and we hope this is a large step in helping to provide that. Thank you.
And I would also like to thank Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson and the administrative team, as well as our middle school principals for doing the best job they could under the circumstances. Next, I would like to defer to our treasurer and CFO, Mr. Wilson, who would like to share some information and a resolution that the board has discussed also with regards to the eighth-grade trip.
Well, thank you. Since the beginning of this, I've supported Mr. Porter and our administrative team by working on the financial aspects and the legal aspects of this challenge. With able legal assistance, we've been able to pursue what we believe is in actions in the best interest of our students, the parents, and the school district, and that has led to a recommendation tonight based on discussions in our executive session earlier that we believe will help be responsive to this unexpected challenge we had and provide a mechanism to support our families and students in addition to the replacement eighth-grade experience. So with the president's permission, I'd like to read the resolution that will be presented for action. Resolution is titled "To Approve the Reimbursement of Student Parents for Trips Paid to Discovery Tours, Inc. for the Eighth Grade Washington DC Trip and to Authorize Squire Patton Boggs to Pursue Legal Proceedings Against Discovery Tours, Inc." Whereas in or around June 30, 2017, the district contracted with Discovery Tours, Inc. for travel and booking for the district's Memorial Shore and Ridge Middle Schools' eighth-grade trip to Washington DC on May 2 through May 4, 2018, whereas consistent with the district's contract with Discovery Tours, families of approximately 511 of the district's eighth graders paid Discovery Tours $455 for each eighth-grade student who was planning to participate in the DC trip. And whereas on May 1, 2018, the day before the trip, Discovery Tours notified the district that it had a dispute with the hotel selected by Discovery Tours for the district's DC trip and was not able to confirm the reservations and availability of hotel rooms for the DC trip. And whereas based on (excuse me) Discovery Tours inability to confirm the availability of hotel rooms or provisions of other travel and booking services to be rendered under the district's contract with Discovery Tours, the district was forced to cancel the DC trip. And whereas Discovery Tours failed to perform its obligations under the district's contract with Discovery Tours, whereas the district, its eighth-grade students, and their families have missed the invaluable opportunity for this year's eighth graders to visit, learn from, and enjoy our nation's capital as their classmates have done every year. And whereas on May 7, 2018, Discovery Tours filed a petition for bankruptcy in the United States Bankruptcy Court for the Northern District of Ohio, and whereas the board desires the district's families to be reimbursed for payments they made to Discovery Tours for the eighth-grade DC trip, and whereas in ensuring that the eighth-grade families are made whole, the board recognizes the district to expend an amount not to exceed $235,000 to reimburse each eighth-grade family for the payments they made to Discovery Tours for the eighth-grade DC trip. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education, the Mentor Exempted Village School District, County of Lake, Ohio, that parent reimbursements, the board authorizes the treasurer to expend up to $235,000 to reimburse the district families for the payments they made to Discovery Tours for the DC trip. Student families shall be eligible for reimbursement up to the $455 based on evidence of actual payment made to Discovery Tours for the DC trip. In addition, as a condition of the payment, the treasurer may require each student's family to whom payment is made to agree to refund the district to the extent the family recovers its payments to Discovery Tours from a collateral source, including travel insurance. Payment shall be made consistent with district policies and all applicable state regulations. Authorization of Legal Action. The board authorizes the law firm, Squire Patton Boggs, to take any and all legal actions necessary and proper to pursue all claims and damages to the district due to Discovery Tours' acts and omissions, including recovery of all funds expended by the board in relation to the DC trip and the reimbursement to families authorized herein. Compliance with Law. This board finds and determines that all formal actions of this board and any of its committees concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were taken and that all deliberations of this board and of any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were held in compliance with the law. This is the motion we're placing before you. I would like to clarify, the working with Mr. Porter, we have identified funding sources of non-tax dollars primarily through donated funds and corporate grants that the district annually receives as our primary funding source to reimburse parents and will not be using any tax dollars for this expenditure. So with the president's permission, I would suggest we take action on this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes. Next, I will entertain hearing of the public on agenda items only. Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes for our regular meeting from April 10 of 2018.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes. Superintendent's report and recommendations. Mr. Porter?
Thank you. Good evening again, Madam President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of Items 6A1 through 6A5, as well as addendum Item A6 that was distributed this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, at this time, I would like to invite Ms. Blackburn and the Ridge Middle School students to the podium for their Make a Difference Day presentation.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Wilson and Mr. Porter. Driven by the desire to enrich literacy skills and build school culture, Ridge students have had the opportunity to participate in the One Grade, One Book program over the last two years. This program would not be possible without the drive and determination of Becca Levine, Brittany Dees, and Tommy Dwyer. I would like to thank them for all of their efforts. An entire grade level reading one book at the same time ignites excitement throughout the building, fosters a sense of community among students, teachers, and staff. The program helps students develop a lifelong love of reading. It cultivates a school-wide theme, such as choose kind or make a difference. The program has numerous benefits for our student body, but rather than having me ramble on about those benefits, who better to describe the program than their students themselves? At this time, I would like to welcome our eighth graders to the podium to discuss I Am Malala and Ridge's Make a Difference Day.
Hi, I'm Kiki Jas Povic, an eighth grader at Ridge Middle School. This year, we had the opportunity to read the book, I Am Malala, for our One Grade, One Book program. The book describes Malala's passion for girls' education and their rights. She risks her life for what she believes in. Malala was able to change the world's view on education. She made a difference in the world, just as Ridge students made a difference on March 27, when all of our eighth graders gave back to local organizations such as Project Hope, Salvation Army, City of Mentor, and many more. We were inspired to make a difference in Lake County, just as Malala made a difference in the world.
Hi, my name's Benny Laduka. My experience from my Make a Difference Day was very eye-opening, and it taught me even to make a big difference. I was able to go to the senior center. My group of friends and I, under the supervision of our two teachers, helped deep clean the senior center, even the toilets.
Wow.
All of the seniors were very nice, and they seemed pleased that we were helping the community. I wish we were able to stay longer and help them out in any other ways. I would love the opportunity to participate in another Make a Difference Day. I know that Ridge is not going to be a middle school next year, and that Memorial and Shore did not do the Make a Difference Day. I hope those schools do the Make a Difference Day, and we really could make a difference in our mentor community next year.
Hi, I'm Kylie Kolchuski, an eighth grader at Ridge Middle School. During my Make a Difference Day experience, I worked alongside students at the Mentor-Broadmore School. Throughout the day, I assisted the teachers in their classrooms, ate lunch with the kids, and made new friendships. Through my experience, I realized although these kids may be different, we are all the same inside. The Ridge Make a Difference Day did not only benefit the students at Broadmore, it was also a great experience for me and my friends. We were able to build friendships and be mentors to young students. But those students helped me learn that everyone should be grateful for what they have, and no obstacle is too big to overcome. Students who were wheelchair-bound didn't spend the day feeling sorry for themselves. Instead, they were happy for what they had. It was a wonderful experience for everyone.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Ward, and I was able to travel to Salvation Army for Make a Difference Day. Our day consisted of preparing and serving lunch to almost 100 homeless individuals. This was an eye-opening experience for me. I didn't realize that so many people in Lake County are in need of food and shelter. Throughout the day, I realized how fortunate me and my classmates are. Many times, we take for granted everything that we have. For example, I don't ever have to fear having a roof over my head or not having food on the table. The individuals at Salvation Army are facing many challenges. I was happy to be able to give back to those in need. It was rewarding to interact with the homeless and to get a new perspective on others' lives and their challenges. Make a Difference Day made a difference in my life and how I viewed Lake County.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Trum, and I am an eighth grader at Ridge Middle School. On Ridge's Day of Service, I went to Wildwood Cultural Center. At Wildwood, we helped clean and renew the historic building. We spent over three hours working hard to make Wildwood look brand-new again. During my experience, I felt as if I was really making a difference to the community. Wildwood is home to many activities that benefit the citizens in our area, which makes me happy knowing that we are doing them a favor. The Make a Difference Day didn't only make a difference at Wildwood, but it made a difference with me and all the students that came.
At this time, we'd like to show a short video, giving an overview of Make a Difference
Today, we had our culminating project for our One Grade, One Book, and our eighth graders read I Am Malala. And in this book, one of the big messages that Malala talks about, and I'm paraphrasing, but she says something along the lines of "one teacher, one child, one pen, one book can change the world. People can make a difference." And so, as a culmination for our One Grade, One Book, we wanted our eighth graders to make a difference.
So we took our entire eighth-grade student population, and we split them into 10 different groups, and some of those stayed actually here at Ridge. One of them worked with our preschool, one of them worked with our custodian, and then the other eight groups went out into the community throughout Lake County.
And we tried to help our community become a better place, just like Malala did in the book with her community.
We do a great job of telling kids they need to get out in the community, and they need to give back, but rarely do students really have that opportunity, so we wanted to provide that opportunity for our students.
When we reached out to different organizations throughout Mentor, so many individuals and groups were willing to open their doors to us. So not only did we have an experience for our students, we also were able to bridge that partnership with some of the community members here in Mentor.
I think it's really important for the eighth graders to have a shared experience, and this One Grade, One Book project happens in our advisory period, and it almost gives unity to our grade because they're able to read the same book, talk about the same things, experience the same things. And so, making this project have a dynamic ending is something that's really important because that drives home the themes of what we're talking about.
Some of the sites we had today, one of them was working with our preschoolers actually here at Ridge, so they were doing makerspace projects with them, as well as we had students that went over to Brentmore Elementary, and they did makerspace projects with them as well. We had students who went over to Broadmore School, right up the street from us, and they were working in various classrooms, some were in the preschool, some were with the older students.
I was at Salvation Army, and we fed the homeless, and I was the head cook. Like, I cooked cater tots and hot dogs, and got to feed them, and yeah, it was pretty fun, so.
Today, me and my group, we went to Deepwater and Willoughby, and we got to help others. So, we helped them create crafts, and then at the end, we all got together and got it in a big picture.
I went to Wildwood, and there, we helped clean up the building a lot and just make it a lot nicer and brighter. And I think even though that's a little change, it can definitely help a lot in the whole big picture.
I went to Project Hope for the homeless. We went and, well, because Project Hope, they're not, the homeless people spend the night there, so they weren't there when we got there. So we just went, I went and changed stuff from plastic bags, paper bags, helped save. We organized, and plus, we made a poster from Ridge and inspirational cards.
So we had some other students who headed over to the senior center here in Mentor, and they were helping out spring clean, as well as we had students who headed to Garfield Park, and they were helping the city of Mentor get ready for their big Earth Day Festival that they're going to be coming up with later in April.
To give back, it feels really nice. It feels like I am a supporter of this community and not just an individual, but I'm part of the community now. And it felt really great seeing all the people being very happy and very glad that we helped out with their projects.
It was just fun because, well, the head, like, the other cooks were funny, and the people said thank you, and they were really nice, so I got to talk to them, and it was just, it felt good in my, like, stomach.
I mean, I felt happy about this because it gave me a different perspective on life. It makes me, it makes me feel ecstatic. I feel so happy that I actually helped somebody in need today.
Being able to be out in the community and helping others and feeling empathy and compassion for other individuals was heartwarming for me as an administrator. So those are the, some of the values that I want our students to leave Ridge with, not only with our academic standards and hitting the curriculum, I also want to teach them what it's like to be a good citizen, how to give back to a community. Volunteerism is an important aspect of our society, and that's something that not all students have the opportunity to do. So what better place to teach that than here at Ridge?
One of the most important pieces of feedback that I got today, two things, actually. I think that, first of all, a lot of the students didn't realize that some of these places existed. They were able to see different areas, for instance, Project Hope and Salvation Army, where they were able to work with some of the homeless population in our local community. And that was a really eye-opening experience for some of our students. The other form of feedback that I got that I felt was really exciting, the students wanted to know how they could volunteer, how they could keep this idea going.
So one of the things we always talk about here at Ridge is having a sense of Ridge pride and choosing kind. And to actually see our students go out into the community and not only display their Ridge pride to people they've never met before, but to actually take that concept of choosing kind and actually follow through on it was something that just made me, as an administrator, so proud to see because they'd always get that opportunity every day here in school.
I think what we learned is that there are people in the world that, like, you say you're a bad, you have a bad, you're having a bad day. There are people out there that are having way worse days, like homeless people. They don't have homes, cars, jobs, like little kids too who can't get an education. So the main theme is just, like, telling us that don't get so upset for not getting something because there are people who can't get all the stuff you have, like simple clothing, simple shelter, food, water.
My favorite part about the Day of Service was just getting to help out our community, no matter if it's, like, even in our school or out open in the community, it's still nice to know that we got to help.
I hope that video and our students up here gave you a little idea of the impact that One Grade, One Book has on our building. At this time, to show our appreciation for the board for supporting the One Grade, One Book program, our eighth-grade students have a little token of our appreciation. The book, I Am Malala.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Awesome. I need a good summer book. Thank you so much. Thank you. That was wonderful.
I would like to thank Ms. Blackburn, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Levine, Ms. Dees, other Ridge staff members, and the Ridge students, and including the ones who are here tonight, for all of your hard work in putting together such an outstanding presentation. I'm very confident we'll be doing Make a Difference Day at the other middle schools next year as well.
Uh-huh.
At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Hammond, Mr. Tuttle, to the podium to recognize several groups of students who have earned awards and/or who have excelled in state
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter, Mr. Wilson. We have a number of recognitions to share with you this evening, and we will begin with our Girl Scout Award winner. If I could have Jade Brush come up to join us here at the podium so I can say and share a few words on your behalf. Jade is a junior at Mentor High School. She plays saxophone in the Fighting Cardinal Marching Band, and she works on props for Mentor Theater. She's also an ambassador of Girl Scout and recently earned her Scout Gold Award. Only 5% of Girl Scouts earn the Gold Award, and it requires a commitment of 80 hours of work on a self-selected project that will have lasting impact on the community. Jade decided to focus on the need for recycling at Mentor High School for her Gold Award after having successfully implemented a one-week recycling program at Memorial when she was in the seventh grade. She developed a plan and met with her advisor, Ms. Dickerson, to identify the steps needed and the people to contact. Jade then met with Mr. Fetczek, Mrs. Skolsky, Mr. Swider, Mr. Kolar, and Mr. Dredella, our district's waste management representative. She priced and purchased the recycling bins, mapped out where the bins would be placed, secured donations of recycle stickers for the lids, made posters, created an informational video, cut holes in the lids, and stayed after school on a Friday to drag 40 recycling bins to their locations around Mentor High, Paradigm, and the Succeed Building. Jade continues to seek community sponsors and donations to cover the total cost of the project, and hopes the project can expand to other buildings and the stadium. Congratulations, Jade Rush.
See if I remember the scale. Shake there.
Congratulations. Thank you. You rock, girl.
At this time, we're going to recognize two Mentor High Eagle Scouts. I'm not sure if I saw them here tonight or not. David Nahr III and Jacob Pachazk... David Nahr III and Jacob Pachazko. Are you here? I didn't see them. Very good, thank you. We're going to move on to the next item. Next, we have our two, two of our middle schools that competed in Science Olympiad. We had Shore and Ridge. First, I'm going to share a word about Shore and then introduce their advisor and the students that are here tonight to come up and receive their certificate. Both Shore and Ridge competed on Saturday, April the 28th, in the Science Olympiad State Competition for Middle School. This was held at the Ohio State University in Columbus. There were 40 teams in the middle school division. Shore finished eighth place overall and they were also the state champions in the Crimebusters event. At this time, if I could have Mrs. Elizabeth Murray and Mrs. Michelle Pugh, who are the advisors, come up front. I'm going to have you help shake the hands of the students. Students, here's what we're going to do, those of you that are here. When I read your name off, I'd like you to come up towards the podium, shake your advisor's hands, shake Mr. Tuttle's hands, and then I'm going to have you go across the front and shake our board members' hands. All right? Alphabetically, congratulations to the following students. Lauren Bangardur, Brianna Bookman, Ethan Eskins, Brendan Friedrich, Sherry Wang, Daniel Catus, Dylan Korniski, Erin Knapp, Travis Kruger, Maura Murray, Ella Pugh, Kayden Rick, Nick Seifert, Evan Sinthick.
Great job.
Guys are awesome, Science Olympiad.
Very proud of you, great job.
Great job.
Nice job.
Fun.
Congratulations, I love Science Olympiad.
Very proud of you, great job.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Rock.
Congratulations, I love Science Olympiad.
Very proud of you, great job.
Outstanding, I love Science Olympiad.
Very proud of you, great job.
Congratulations, I love Science Olympiad.
And again, a very special thank you to Mrs. Pugh and Mrs. Murray and congratulations to the Shore Science Olympiad team.
Thank you, great job again this year. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki.
Yeah, they didn't show. Next up, we would like to recognize the Ridge Middle School team. If I could have Mrs. Carol Abbott come up with me and stand here at the podium, we'd like you to help us as well. She's the advisor for the team. They were in the same division, again, out of 40 teams. Ridge finished 10th. They had, of the 23 categories, they had five, top five finishes, which was outstanding. So congratulations to them. We will do the same. I'll read student names. Students, if you would, come up across the front, shake hands, and then shake our board members' hands as well. Congratulations to the following. Samantha Abbott, Ben Billings, Evie Bojantis, Costa Bojantis, Deirdra Dorazio, Andrew Freeman, Sarah Freeman, Abby Horvath, Lucas Halli, Hallie Hummel, Xander Lippert, Matt Mogling, Jayvon Patel, Jania Patel, Bill Putney, Megan Smith, Sidney Testy, Kaylee Vance, Brandon Whalen, and Alex Woolok.
Very proud of you, great job.
By the way, I love the T-shirts.
Yeah, they're really cool.
They're cool. High school as well. I've watched yours when you walked in, so, cool shirts.
Congratulations, I love Science Olympiad.
Very proud of you, great job.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Congratulations, we love Science Olympiad.
Very proud of you, great job.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Nice job.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating Mrs. Abbott and the Ridge
team.
Thank you for a wonderful year.
Thank you.
You rock, baby.
This young man already beat me to the punch. This is Mr. Ramsey, advisor for Science Olympiad. That's because he's going to help me do this. He's already agreed to. And Sean Langham, who's the other advisor as well. Let me say a couple of words about the high school team. And by the way, I follow you guys on Twitter, okay? Mennor High School finished third out of 40 teams at the state level. I went online because I wanted to see this information also besides looking on Twitter. I saw some of the information, but I got the rest of it. Out of the 40 teams, they finished third. There are 23 possible event categories. The Mennor High School team had 16 top-five finishes out of those 23 categories. And out of those 16 top-five, four were state champion event winners. They won experimental design, forensics, material science, and optics. That deserves a round of applause. High school, we're going to do the same thing we did with the middle schools, except I'm going to have Mr. Ramsey read your names off so I don't, so he gets them right, okay? You're going to come up, shake hands, and then shake, hopefully, right?
Mr. Langham, Mr. Robinson.
Okay. Make sure you shake our board members' hands as you come through as well. Mr. Ramsey.
Josh Ashby, if you're here. Demetra Bibidakis, captain. Kristen Buse. Michael Chen. Just keep going. Lilian Miller. Alex Berry. Tommy Odo. Kush Pocky. Michael Petty. Josh Pugh. Corinne Duffy. Allison Lee. Sarah Maynes. Peter Mansberger. Kevin Pentkowski. Jack Tivano.
Very proud of you, great job.
Leon. Matthew Crummis. Justin Crowell. David Gonya. Vasnavi Kasabwala. Ben Nagel. Judo Tool. Yannick Patel. Sarah O'Maya. Andy Smith. Philip Stevenson.
Very proud of you, great job.
Very proud of you, great job.
Respect, excited about Science Olympiad.
Very proud of you, great job.
Excellent job.
Mr. Petty.
Very proud of you, great job.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We are so proud of you.
Very proud of you, great job.
Great job.
Go Corinne.
Thank you so much, you're fantastic.
Very proud of you, great job.
Great job.
Thomas.
Great job.
Very proud of you, great job.
Great job.
Very proud of you, great job.
Great job.
Very proud of you, great job.
Great job.
And I messed up, Josh Pugh is co-captain.
We're so proud of you.
Very proud of you, great job.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, you're fantastic.
Very proud of you, great job.
Great job.
Thomas.
Great job.
Very proud of you, great job.
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 Great job.
Congratulations.
It's fantastic, we're so proud of you.
Very proud of you, great job.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Wow, great. These are amazing.
Very proud of you, great job.
Great job.
Congratulations.
You guys are amazing.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating Mr. Ramsey, Mr. Langham, and the CNI team.
Thanks for another great year. Mr. Langham, well done. Mr. Ramsey.
One thing I forgot to say.
I know how much the middle schools practiced. I also know how many countless hours the high school practices on a daily and weekly basis to get to the level that they do. Well done.
Congratulations to all the students and a big thank you to the parents. We're going to take a five-minute break. Anyone that would like to disperse can do so. You're welcome to stay for the remainder of the board meeting.
Alright, we're back in session.
Madam President and members of the Board, we have a first reading on the agenda for several revised, new, and replacement policies. Because this is a first reading, no vote is necessary.
I wanted to ask about the policy 3.19 that we may want to clarify how we define intellectual property in regard to individual teacher products. And then I wanted to compliment the changes for the College Credit Plus. I think that program needed to be clarified and improved in order to really meet the needs of students in terms of their starting at a college level versus remaining at the high school for various courses. I think it will make it more likely that students' needs are being met more effectively. So thank you for that.
Anything specific on 3.19?
I just, I know it talks about things in general, but it doesn't mention specifically teacher product. So that, how that, you know, maybe there'd be a clarification we'd want to make in tandem with the Teachers Association so that everybody understands the expectations and rights and privileges they're in.
Anything else?
Madam President and members of the Board, I am recommending approval of the resolution to accept and approve the Mennor High School graduating class of 2018.
So moved.
Second? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jizzling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the Board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to Certified Staff and C2 through, through C4, all related human resource matters.
So moved. Second? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Jizzling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner? Thank you. That concludes my portion of tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Board of Education report and recommendations. Who has that business item?
I can, I'd be happy to take that. At this time, I would like to recommend a resolution honoring Dr. Stephen R. Heller be approved. That's included with the board materials. I am grateful for your support of this resolution to name the gymnasium at Ridge after Dr. Heller. As you know, with his unexpected passing this past winter, he left a legacy with his administrative leadership, teaching and coaching in our district. We will plan to have a dedication ceremony in September, once Ridge is up and running as an elementary building. So I offer, I offer that.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second?
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jizzling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number two.
Yes, if I may, as the Board knows through regular correspondence, that we've been managing through a lawsuit filed against the district challenging our implementation of the Fair Labor Standard Act and how we compute overtime pay for support staff that are eligible for longevity payments. Our insurance company was involved with funding the expense of our legal counsel and giving guidance on the case. We have, on advice of our counsel, through a series of discussions and court-required steps along the way, reached a point where we have a settlement agreement and we're asking that, consistent with the information we've been providing to the Board, that we take action tonight to approve a resolution to enter into the settlement of this litigation with the terms and conditions as we presented to you.
So moved.
Second? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jizzling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative report, Mr. Tuttle.
Well, thank you. An update on the property valuation bill, House Bill 343. It's a bill sponsored by Derek Maron that seeks to change the process for challenging property valuation that is currently run through the County Board of Revisions. You may recall, we've covered this before. The bill was recently voted on by the Ohio House and is now pending before the Senate Ways and Means Committee. OSBA, BASA, and OASBO are opposed to the legislation and encourage members to contact their state senators and urge their opposition to these changes. So I also urge one and all to do that and anybody in the audience, please contact our state senators. House Bill 343 would require notification of property owners by the school district to let them know the district is considering a challenge to the current valuation of their property. This is a redundant mandate because the Board of Revisions process is already set up for the purpose affecting, affected property owners are currently notified. After making notification, the Board of Education would have to pass a resolution indicating they will challenge the values for specific properties. This step would have the effect of politicizing the decisions as to which properties would be challenged. Dan, I have no idea how many properties that do go through a challenge. Do you have an idea how many? I would estimate somewhere between 50 and 100 annually. And again, the Board's position has been, when there's been an arms-length transaction that would reset the value of a property different than it's on the books, or in defense of action, when a property owner requests a reduction where there's not clear credible appraisal information or recent sales. So on an annual basis, somewhere between 50 and 100 is the normal amount. So you've established parameters? Yes. To make the choice that automates the selection. Yes, again, we, it's only for commercial and industrial properties. The loss in tax value has to exceed $500 annually to the district. We have to look to see if it's a one-year occurrence pending the next triennial update or six-year reappraisal, or if there's a multiple-year consequence to that. And again, to assure that the property owners are presenting credible evidence of value from a certified appraiser or can present a recent arms-length sale that documents the fair market value of the property. So yes, we do have criteria that... So yes, we do have criteria that the board has used consistently for several decades. And it's in several different places. We will be consolidating that into one written document.
Right. Thank you. One other one, House Bill 318, school safety. House Bill 318 was passed by the Ohio House and now pending action in the Senate. The legislation introduced by Reps. John Patterson of Jefferson, Sarah Lotteret of Chesterlin, prescribes qualifications and training requirements for school resource officers and appropriates $10 million for grants to public and private schools for school safety programs. Step in the right direction. Will $10 million do enough, but at least it's start recognizing it needs to be done.
Do you have any idea of the details on that, Tom?
No, I don't. But I could get those for the next meeting. And House Bill 512, the legislation that would consolidate Ohio Department of Education, Ohio Department of Higher Education, and the Governor's Office of Workforce Transformation into a new state agency called the Ohio Department of Learning and Achievement, has received a few hearings in the House Government Accountability Oversight Committee. OSBA continues to have serious concerns about the proposal, urges local boards to take action. In our case, we've already taken action. If we need to take additional action, we probably should. This is a step in the wrong direction, obviously. I'm wondering if this is going to be someone's signature legislation before he or she is no longer in office.
Do you have anything else on HP 591, the report card revisions?
No, and I'm sorry, I skipped over that because I'm not really in tune to the report cards. Apologize for that.
I didn't know, Mr. Porter, if you had any opinion formed yet on that legislation as it's just been introduced.
It would be a start in the right direction to simplify and make it a more understandable, not just to the public, but even educators. So, I think it's a step in the right direction, but, you know, that continues to go through different iterations and versions.
Thanks.
Thank you. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to Chief Financial Officer's report and recommendations.
Yes, we recommend approval of Agenda Items 8A through F. They are all routine monthly transactions, nothing exceptional or especially noteworthy.
So moved. Second?
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Jizzling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Breyer?
Yes.
Any unfinished business? Any new business? Okay. And now we'll move on to hearing of the public on any item, agenda or not on the agenda. Go up to the podium, state your name. Three-minute limit, please.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Secconi. I do want to say that I'm grateful for the actions of the board tonight regarding the DC trip. My son is an eighth-grade student at Memorial Middle School. Although I'm grateful for the actions tonight, I do have some questions. I'm happy to hear that the district addressed the financial implications of the loss of the DC trip, but I'm confused as to why the choice was made to reimburse the parents instead of rescheduling the trip. The parents decided months ago that the benefits of the DC trip were worth spending the $455. We chose for our students to have this experience instead of having money in our pockets. I appreciate the community stepping up and supporting our students, but this replacement trip, in comparison to the educational experience DC offers, it just pales in comparison. DC has been a culminating middle school experience for middle school students for years, and I'm sorry to see that my son and the eighth-grade class are losing out on this trip. My question for the board would be, why did you choose to reimburse the parents rather than reschedule the DC tour? And why weren't parents consulted on what they wished regarding reimbursement or rescheduling?
I can speak a little bit to the trip itself. Rescheduling the DC trip would not have been feasible, given our current conditions. We have a few weeks of school left. We talked about all sorts of different possibilities. One of the things that we learned from talking to some locations, you know, in DC and other places, as well as travel experts, is to try to do it within the framework of the remainder of the school year was impossible, particularly given the number of students we were trying to serve. We talked also about the possibilities of, would it, would we be better served trying to conduct a trip in the summer? Would we be better served trying to conduct a trip in ninth grade? While there may be some merits to those different ideas, and we certainly talked about all the, we, as we weighed the pros and cons, it made more sense to us to try to do something more immediately with our own students who would be still together for the remaining three weeks of school, to try to come up with something. And quite honestly, there's no perfect solution when someone cancels on you at the 11th hour. It's not going to replace what we're, while we have, there is educational value in some of the activities, particularly with day two, it's not going to replace, you know, the value of a Washington DC trip. So, certainly, you know, that would have been ideal if we were able to do something like that, but that wasn't feasible, given all the different circumstances and the timing in our, in our situation.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam President. I am Kimberly Ikey. I also do have a student at eighth grade. I know I've spoke to a couple people in Ridge. My questions were pretty much the same, but I do also want to add is, why can't we do it in ninth grade, instead of getting our money back? Obviously, it's a legal issue for everybody, not, I mean, not only the district, but, I mean, we paid Discovery tourists together, ourselves. So, there's a lot of stuff that's not being told to us, and I understand, under some circumstances, what's not being told to us, or why you can't tell, but I think a parent meeting needs to be held to address this, and I know we're having a parent meeting to address this new opportunity, and my daughter is grateful for that, and I'm grateful for it as well. She called me screaming, happy, so just letting you know. But, again, you know, I have my, I don't know how old she is, 20-year-old. She went to DC and she, she even said, you know, it's not the same experience that they're getting. And I understand, you know, three weeks left, but there's, I don't know, what, 12 other schools that have rescheduled within those, you know, a couple weeks left. Summer may have not been it, but why can't we look at ninth grade? And I'd rather you guys keep the money and reschedule them in ninth grade than have it back in my pocket. And with it back in our pocket, does that reduce what we can file legally against them? And are we pursuing criminal investigations as well? Because portages and juggas. These are a lot of questions that we don't have answered, and we can't ask anybody.
I can speak on the ninth grade option again. We had some parents reach out with just different, there was more of a sentiment to try to do something more immediately from the parents we heard from. And also, there was a, more of a sentiment about recouping the money more immediately rather than, you know, putting it towards something down the road. We also do have a number of eighth graders, for a variety of reasons, that may attend other schools and would not have that opportunity. We felt, you know, as we, again, weighed the pros and cons, that to try to do this more with the eighth graders who were still in front of us for three weeks made the most sense.
Okay.
But we did consider, you know, the different options, you know, including what you've mentioned.
I know 511 students, you can't make everybody happy, and 500, you know, 1,000 parents can't make them happy either. About the legal aspects, though, are we ever going to be able to find out what's going on with that? Because I've been contacted ourselves by, you know, a, what is it, class action? I hate legal stuff. By a class action that they're looking into. Senator has called me, Better Business Bureau already said they can't do anything, and that we had to call the Attorney General, and they called me. So, a lot of us parents have a lot of unanswered questions that we can't answer to the people that are calling us.
And I can share with you, as you heard at the beginning of the meeting, we held an executive session tonight. We had a special meeting before this, met with our legal counsel. Within an hour of being notified that the trip was canceled, we engaged support from our legal advisors who specialize in this type of challenge, and they have been actively pursuing every legal option that are available. And as you've maybe read in the media and have heard from others or just talking about it, events have been changing almost by the hour.
Oh, absolutely.
Certainly by the day. With the knowledge yesterday that formal filing of bankruptcy occurred, that changes the legal options that are available. And as we said earlier on, the Board of Education is committed to protecting the best interest of the students and the parents, as well as the school district. And we have been exploring, continue to explore, every legal avenue possible, but with the formal filing and federal court of bankruptcy, it changes some of the dynamics of our pursuit. But we are still actively engaged in talking on a daily basis with legal counsel to act in the best interest of both the parents and the district.
I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Because they, you guys sent the thing to, I called them and they want copies of my payments, that I made. Do we do that, since we're getting them back?
Yes, I, our, we did consult our legal counsel, who has been in contact with the Attorney General's office. There are county prosecutors in other counties. I'm not certain of here in Lake County yet what actions may be occurring, but there are some county prosecutors taking action on behalf of districts in their counties. We have been communicating with the Attorney General's office. The formal business transaction was between parents and the tour company, and the Attorney General is focused on that core business transaction. We are involved and supportive. At this moment in time, our legal counsel has indicated that the Attorney General's office, while we're aware of their efforts, don't, there's no opportunity at this moment, as we sit here tonight, for us to engage them directly as a school district. But we continue to monitor the various events there and are trying to coordinate with that. And we will be encouraging parents, as you heard when we read the resolution, to pursue all possible restitution for parents that did purchase trip insurance from the recommended insurance company to file a claim, to the extent payments were made with credit cards, to file a dispute with the credit card company, and to pursue any other means of engaging the Attorney General's office or others. We encourage all of that. But the core business transaction between the family and the tour company has some restrictions on what we can do as a school district. But we want to be supportive of all those actions, to the extent that we can offer support.
Well, if we get, we get the money back from you guys, what if my credit card company reimburses me my money?
What we will do, and what the board passed tonight in the resolution, is authorizing me to create a system, and we'll be following up in the next few days, and then we will have a communication plan on this, for asking families to document the out-of-pocket expense and also document any reimbursements that they are expecting or have received, and then the school district will pay the difference between those.
I have another question, but you're not. I just want to know, can we get a copy of what you proposed today, or what you read that wasn't in here?
Yeah, I have some copies of the resolution, happy to distribute them. If we have to make more, we'll do that.
And then, we eventually do have a contract with Discovery, correct? Because we pay them? Or is there?
No, the, we have an agreement, one for each of the three middle schools, confirming the, the tour activities and agreements. The individual transaction, as you know, was again between the parents and the tour company direct. So, the, the documents we have were those confirming the dates, the type of activities, the length of it, and, and those things. Yes.
Anyone else? Communication is very important to the school district and the school board, and I think that that was evident in the fact that, within hours after receiving the information about the trip, our superintendent got the information out. There was no attempt to hide any of this information from our students or our parents. So, I would say that we have done the best that we can to communicate the information with parents and students, as it has changed. So, if you have questions or concerns, I would encourage you to go through your, your principals at your schools, and if for any reason you feel that you're not getting the information you need, feel free to reach out to the board office. Okay? Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, I'm not sure what they can do for you, but that's why we voted on the resolution that we did tonight, to try to take that burden off of the 500-plus parents. We're going to take that on for you, so that it just kind of relieves that for you.
Yes, we're going to provide support, but again, the core business transaction was you as a parent making a payment to the tour company. And yes, that may be a little awkward with online transactions, but as with any legal proceedings, there needs to be documentation to support reimbursements, legal action, whatever it may be. To the extent that, that we can support you in obtaining documentation in some secondary way, we don't want to be engaged with your transactions with your personal credit card company, that's your own business. But to the extent there are questions that we can help or support we can give, certainly willing to do that.
I've never felt hit anything, because I know it's now a legal matter, and, you know, the three messages I got, my text message, my phone call, and my emails, you know, within that hour was, you know, fantastic. So I do appreciate it, obviously. And I know it's a legal matter, you can't tell us everything.
Well, we are communicating everything we can.
I know.
So try to hang in there.
We are.
You know, it's a very unfortunate situation. We're trying to do the best we can to make everyone happy. Talk to your principals about chaperones. All right, we're going to move on to, do we need an executive session or not? Okay. And I guess we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jizzling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Breyer?
Yes.
And we do have some copies of the resolution tonight, and Mr. Lynch has.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.